It's cool.
I'm good.
It's not gonna look good on camera. Like he gives it. I didn't get tied up with the wreck. I just didn't get off at five o'clock. By the time you go home and change, I haven't. We need to work on that door. I know you're the food woman.
And also if you all would.
If hello. Testing one two. Hello.
Okay, and look, if everybody would please silence your cell phones, please. Just please make sure they're turned on silent.
You're awful demanding.
I'm just, we have, I've had some people comment about telephones ringing on some of.
Well, they commented about me last week calling, our last meeting call.
I was just demonstrating.
Well, somebody could go over to me and say they will know who you're talking about.
Yes, ma'am. I'm ready whenever you are, bro.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special called meeting for February the third, 2021. At this time, roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie.
Present.
Mrs. Smith.
Present.
Mrs. Bailey.
Present.
Mr. Palmer.
Present.
Mr. Campbell.
Present.
Mrs. Garner.
Present.
Mr. Allgood.
Present.
Mr. Edwards.
Present.
Mr. Honeycutt.
Present. Can I get a motion that we adopt tonight's agenda, please?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion from his, I'm sorry, yes, sir, Mr. Ritchie.
I wanna make a motion to amend the agenda.
Yes, sir.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
I would like to add another item. I know we probably don't have to officially vote on it, but the original plan, I got a lot of emails, which I'm sure most of you did, and a lot of the.
Yes, sir.
A lot of the ones that were more constructive ones asked that we stick with the February fifteenth date that was originally advertised, because that's what they had planned to do. And I know that we probably don't have to officially vote on that, but I think to give a choi, I see we have the eighth on here. I would like to add, make a motion to add another, an item to our agenda to start on the fifteenth.
Okay, so we have an amendment to the agenda to start on the regular date of February the fifteenth. Ms. Bailey.
I'm not sure we need to change the agenda. I think we can, when we get to that place on the agenda, you can just amend them. I mean, you can say, you can make a motion for whatever you want to at that point in the vote.
Yeah, I guess if it, if the, the item on there wasn't so specific, I would have, I wouldn't have bothered to try, but the item on, the only item on there specifically says February eighth, instead of just being open-ended and letting us come up with a date.
Well, at this point, yes, Ms. Bailey.
That, that, this happens at all of our meetings. These motions are put here, they're template motions. And, you know, it's, it's a habit that this board has gotten into that I think is a bad habit. I think when we get to an action item, it should have a, a title as to what we're voting on. And that whoever wants to make a motion about whatever they want to make a mo, it doesn't have to be the motion that's here on the template. But if you, if we want to change the template, I, I suppose, I expect that now would be the time to do it, but a template motion really doesn't mean anything until somebody makes, that's just my opinion.
And again, that, that was, well, another point, Mr. Ritchie, that, you know, we were gonna have discussion, and whatever the majority said and decided at that point is how we would move forward as far as an opening date. Is that satisfactory?
Oh, yeah, as long, but it's just the, the date that's been on, the date that's on here, the date that everybody read.
Yes, sir.
Says the eighth. So that the impression that everybody has is that's all we're voting on tonight is either the eighth or.
Well, I think it's whatever the majority of the board votes on or wants to after.
Well, I don't, I withdraw it then. I don't, if we can change that date when we get to it, then that's fine.
Yes, and again, like Ms. Bailey said, I believe we can make a motion at that point, after listening to the data and hearing Mr. Nichols and then listening to everybody else as well. So do you wish to remove the motion at this point?
Yeah, I withdraw that.
Okay. All right, so the motion is to adopt the agenda as presented. Roll call, please.
I need a second.
Second.
I'm sorry. All right, I think Dora, Mr. Edwards was the original first. And then second came from Ms. Garner. I'm sorry.
Mr. Ritchie.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mrs. Garner.
Yes.
Mr. Allgood.
Yes.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt.
Yes, and before we move into superintendent's report and information items, I'd just like to say thank you to all of the board members who came this evening. And my wish is for a, a good conversation about our children's education and how we're to move forward as a division. And I just would like to keep this congenial. I look forward to hearing, and I think the rest of the board members look forward to hearing from each of us. Each of us are entitled to our own opinions, and at the end of the day, like we just said, Mr. Ritchie too, you know, we'll take a vote, and at that point, that's how we will move forward as a division. So I just appreciate everybody being here, and I mean that sincerely. Thank you. And I know we as adults can have a good conversation. So with that being said, Mr. Nichols, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Honeycutt, members of the board. Tonight, we're having a special meeting, which is a very angst-ridden. It is controversial. It is very difficult for everybody that's involved, because as has been stated many, many times, we know it's important.
Thank you.
To have the students back in, in school. Virtual learning works for some, but it is very difficult on parents. It's very difficult on most students. It's very difficult for the staff persons all the way through. So it's been this delicate balance ever since last March of, of how do we make sure that we are keeping students safe and healthy and following guidelines that really haven't changed? There's a lot of guidelines out there. There's been new conversations from persons at the governor's office, at the president's office, and others, talking about, you know, everybody recognizing that students need to be in school. That's true, and, and there may very well be a law soon coming from the general assembly about that. But, you know, at the same time, the guidelines really haven't changed that much. There's been some, some opportunities for us to, to make some, some adjustments as necessary, trying to work with us on that. You will remember at the January meeting, I presented new guideline recommendations from the state. I'd like to go over those. After I do that, Mr. Jeffers is gonna talk about our actual COVID data. That was a significant portion of our making the decision. I've asked Ms. Height to give you an update on some of our instructional concerns. I've asked Mr. Dalton to do the same thing, related transportation and some other concerns, and I've asked Ms. Mooney to give a health update on several of the issues. And I do this because I want everybody to understand that the decision that was made last week, which led to a change in our original plan, our original plan was that students would have the opportunity to return at all levels, face-to-face instruction at the beginning of second semester. And that was the plan actually until Wednesday of last week, when we had a significant meeting, watching a spike, and it was a significant spike in the number of COVID cases and having the opportunity to hear from many of persons on staff. So if you, if we can turn now to the, the new guidelines, they basically are looking at the whole, at, at the Department of Ed and others, recognizing that students need to come back, and that in, in most cases, in most school divisions throughout the state, we've paid attention to one item, and that's been the local community spread. And the governor's, with his staff's decision, that the state and, and recognizing within school divisions, whether they be cities or rural areas or suburban areas, they had a guideline for when a, a, an area would be green, yellow, orange, or red. And the initial recommendation from March the thirteenth through December, early December, I believe, was that if the area was red, then the school division, there would be enough COVID spread that we would need to pay attention. And that's what we were doing. We had our elementary students come back. We had our special needs and ESL students come back. We did have a couple of options during that time when the county went into the red, but we were able to rock, recognize that that was at specific locations. And so at that point, we ignored the red because we knew in our schools we were okay. But toward, after Thanksgiving break, just before, a week before, a little bit more than a week before, the Christmas break, the county went into the red by then states' guidelines. And we, along with most other school divisions, chose to move fully virtual. We anticipated, based on the medical data, that after Christmas, there would be another spike because of the Christmas break. And so at that point, we said we thought it would be safe to give it two weeks for things to level off, and that January, I believe it was January fifteenth, would be the time that we would look to come back, as we had been for the first part of the year, first part of first semester with our students, and then look at second semester with the plan to bring our secondary students back in, and, and more elementary students having the option to come back in face-to-face unless their parents specifically chose. And we, we worked on bus routes. We worked on an A B schedule for our secondary students, because there simply is no way to follow social distancing guidelines at our secondary schools without going on an alternating week schedule. So we put that, that was in place. The parents had been communicated with about that to get their, their desires. And then in January, the department came out with these five guidelines. If we can go back. Okay. I'll pause.
Did we lose internet?
Yeah.
Okay.
We ready?
We're back on, bro.
Do you have any idea where I got cut off? Okay, so, but, uh, in January, early January, we got some new guidelines from the Department of Ed that were speaking to the governor's expectations, that listed these five areas that schools needed to take into consideration. The first one is self-assessment of implementation. We look at that, and we find that we have had very good implementation as we went through the first semester. We had no cases that we're aware of during the contact tracing of any spread at the school. There were, there were cases of COVID, but there were no cases of spread at our elementary schools. And as we looked at second semester, one of our concerns was that we're not gonna be able to keep our secondary students contained to the degree that we're keeping elementary students contained. But we're looking at the option of moving forward with that. The second was determining the level of community transmission. And I do wanna add, and when you see the slide that we've put together, I've got two lines that I've added to that slide that indicate, again, at first, the rate per ten thousand that the state first recommended, that we look at closing for full virtual, was twenty-five per ten thousand. Now, data that's come from them with this guidelines is making some recommendations about fifty per ten thousand. At the time that we made the decision last week, you will see that that recommendation, that our local level, and it was community spread, it wasn't reserved at one place, it was at sixty-five per ten thousand. So we've been looking for that number, and that was key part of this area working with it. The third area was determining the level of school impact. Now, again, and you, when you look at that data, we did not see among our schools any transmission. We did see quarantines. We had four classes that were quarantined through the year. We had multiple teachers and multiple students that were quarantined through that time. But you will see on the data that in January, we did have significantly higher numbers of personnel, not looking at students, which we don't know that we have a totally accurate data there, but we do have this, the teacher data that's been reported, and that increased significantly. So those were two areas that were primary in looking at the, the decision that was made last Wednesday. Number four, understanding the needs of the community. We obviously understand. That's why we were looking at bringing them back. And then number five, deciding which groups to include for in-person. We were wanting to include everyone, of course, except those that, whose parents chose not to come back, although it would be on an alternating A B schedule for secondary students. So with that in mind as the decision, I do wanna give Mr. Jeffers an opportunity to show you the data that's been collected on, on areas related to number two and number three as a part of the decision, and then we will look as well from the others and some of the data that was the decision-making process, as we had all of our principals and senior staff at the secondary level get together to have a significant discussion about that decision.
All right. Chairman Honeycutt, members of the board, Superintendent Nichols, thank you for opportunity to just run through a few pieces of information with you quickly. A lot of this you're familiar with, because you pay close attention to what's happened, what we've all been dealing with for the last year almost now. This shows you the total cases or the daily case rate, and the moving yellow line shows you the case rate per hundred thousand for the Commonwealth of Virginia since last March to January thirty-first. We see that nice bubble in the middle, and no one would imagine, I don't think, the numbers we saw here, but this was, oh, it was bad back in the spring. It was bad in the summer, and boy, it really got bad. It's like when you see it in scale, things really did progress in a negative direction in that February, January timeline, December, January. Mecklenburg, as you see here, same, same chart, just from Mecklenburg County since March of last year. You can see a similar pattern. As Mr. Nichols mentioned, there were huge spikes in the summer, and these we know were not related to school. We have complete confidence that these were not ours. And that's when we opened school, you remember, we actually touched red a couple of times in the twenty-five per hundred thousand. We were in the red, and people, some questioned, why'd you start school? Because once again, we knew exactly where those cases were, and they were not ones that would be impacting our school system. So we did not have as much impact in, in this timeframe. As we got into the fall, November, uh, this is the November's climb began, December and January. And I think what this is really illustrates well is that if you look between Virginia and Mecklenburg County, they aren't exactly parallel to each other, but they have followed a very similar path. Significant spread, community spread in November, December, and January. We take the safety of our employees very seriously, and, and we're very concerned about our students and our, and our employees. And as you remember, there was so much unknown about this thing, March, April, May, June. July, we started getting a little more information. We started planning. We planned for the reopening. And it's also worth commending Mecklenburg County for opening school face-to-face with elementary students in an extremely safe manner. We were able to mitigate that. The desire was to have more people come back, and we had, you know, from the beginning, other folks were trying to, said, I want my child to return to face-to-face. So, but the plan we came up with was to return at semester. And as Ms. Nichols mentioned, we were planning to come back in January. We have that two-week window after the new year, hopefully let the cases drop, but then we continue to watch the numbers closely, and as you see, some of our highest numbers, Mecklenburg County, daily cases were in January. And as we, so we'd have our meetings once a week, and we'd look at, uh, monitor the numbers daily. Mr. Nichols and I had conversations, other staff members, and we'd meet with all the principals once a week, and we review the numbers, and we basically had a no-go, go or no-go call that we were looking for. Can we open next week safely? And we would make that decision on a Wednesday, and we'd say, we don't believe we can. And that decision was made one week, two weeks, three weeks in January. And that's how we came to, but last week, when we had the meeting, and the numbers, when we had our meeting, the meeting was scheduled for Wednesday. We looked at the numbers on Tuesday. They were, they had been down two days in a row. Looked like we were in the, going in the right direction. And then we got hit Wednesday morning with twenty-six cases in the county, which once again took us to one of the highest per hundred thousand infection number of cases that Mecklenburg County's had the entire season from one year, uh, from the beginning of this. We were at the worst community transmission rate last week that we've been ever in this county. And so, but we were, we're still hopeful. We were still hopeful then that maybe we could open Monday, the eighth, but we weren't sure. So rather than have the conversation today with that same group, last week, we said, let's, we're gonna, this, the number's gotta be getting better. Let's set the date for the fif, for, for February the fifteenth. That's where, or February eighteenth, we'll come back then. And so the plan we put in place, and of course, school divisions operate on plans, was to come back the fifteenth with, with hope and trust that our numbers would be down. And as you've watched, I'm sure you watch every day, our numbers the last four days, four new cases, five new cases, six new cases, seven new cases. These are the lowest numbers we've seen since back here in the fall. And that's really encouraging, very positive. We feel good about the decisions we made, though. And when you look back, we're gonna follow a trend line here. This is actually two trend lines that kinda run with each other. We have the blue line representing our numbers of new cases, daily new cases. This is, we're gonna look at December and January. Again, reinforce that idea that of the entire COVID pandemic, Mecklenburg County is, has been in the throes of the worst of it in December and January. First, the December, how many new cases? Four new cases, and they bounced up and down. The highest we had was the twenty-six new cases on Christmas, uh, Christmas Day, bouncing back and forth. This was our community transmission rate, the yellow lines. And while there were ups and downs in it, they were trending up, and by the time we, we stopped on the, we'd gone, remember, the red line is the twenty-fifth, uh, the line of twenty-five cases. That's where our direction and guidance back in the fall had said, if you have more than twenty-four cases, you probably should have hesitancy about operating your schools. And so we, that's when we shut down in December, and we, the, it paid off. When you look at, let's carry on, we're now at, this is forty, uh, thirty-seven cases. That's going to January. January, we pick up right where we were. Here's January the first, and you can see the lines, our trend lines, moving along in this one. And as we move through January, January tenth, we're ready to come back. Oh, it's looking good. We're ready to come back. And then we, our numbers jumped right back in to these high levels. January twenty-second, look at our daily cases continued spike up to the thirties. This line here is the thirty line. These are the most cases we had daily, and this was community spread. And there's where we hit our peak of the highest number of cases that we've ever had in Mecklenburg, Mecklenburg County per hundred thousand. So the line, this line is going down now. February first, second, third, February first was not, yeah, February first, second, third, these numbers are dropping, and, and we're gonna drop back below in Monday, Sunday, Monday. As long as we don't have some big spike tomorrow, the next day, our numbers are looking good and, and very positive. This has impacted us, real people. Of course, the year, we've had the, Ms. Nichols mentioned, we had to quarantine some people. These are actual numbers, employees. Since the, the outbreak began back in the spring, we set up a spreadsheet, a confidential spreadsheet that Ms. Nurse Mooney has, has kept track of. It was limited, folks having access to it, but these are our real cases of people that tested positive for COVID in our division. We had one faculty, or one faculty, this is faculty or staff. We call them employees, because sometime it might be a bus driver, sometime it might be, uh, you know, principal of school. One person quarantined in August, eight September, seven October, two November. Nine in December, and ten, these are all employees that were quarantined due to being positive themselves. And as you know, we lost one employee. And when that, we, that was, and that's the only loss we know of. That, this is the trend of that one. So you say, should we be in school? We have more people that are tested positive. Our employees were impacted in January as well. Another impact, not only did some people test positive, we also had folks that were quarantined because they were confirmed exposed and going through our tracking process. You were gonna be quarantined because you've had close exposure to someone. And once again, we see these numbers. As Ms. Nichols said, we don't have terrible confidence. These are the students who reported being quarantined, uh, or contact, close quarantine contact. So these are the folks, sixty-eight, I think that number was, sixty-eight students had close contact, and they wouldn't be able to be in school if they wanted to be in school. And we also had forty, uh, I think it's forty-six or forty-eight, what the blue line represents, employees that were quarantined during the month of January. And that's also, when you think about operations and processing and implementing the practices and procedures we have in our division, it does make it difficult when you have forty-six members of your, you know, of your employees that are unable to work because of, of COVID. So that's what we're looking at. That's what we, that's what the numbers are for Mecklenburg County. Overall trend compared to Virginia, the number of cases and actual numbers of people that have been impacted either positive themselves or quarantined. So that's our, that's our data there.
Quick, quick, quick.
Mr. Jeffers?
I'm sorry, Mr. Ritchie, go ahead.
So the only way you get these numbers is if they self-report?
Yes, students and faculty. The faculty, we, we're, we've got our folks working pretty well. They, they report to Ms. Mooney if it's a division or a non-building-based person. All the other ones report directly to their nurse in the building, and there's a pretty stringent reporting procedure we have for anyone that's notified, that is positive themselves or is quarantined. And, and we do it for a number of reasons. Obviously, we look for FMLA and how the CARES Act may impact folks and how we're gonna handle leave. So there's a lot of pieces come in play. So we did formalize that procedure back in, in the summer, so we could handle these cases that come through. But for students, it's, yes, completely up to the student reporting. For, you know, in January, we didn't have students in school, for instance, so no one came to school. No one said, I won't be in school because, uh, you know, I've been exposed to someone. This was all through, through basically just people on their, their own goodwill, reporting it to the, to the school.
Quick question, Mr. Jeffers. I understood you to say, and I, you just, I heard something different then. I thought all of these numbers that you were showing were faculty. Of the whole division out of seven hundred employees, this was the number of faculty, but this is children involved as well.
The orange lines are students, and the blue lines are employees.
Okay.
Yes, I just put them side by side.
Okay.
We, we tried to monitor both. And the one, we, we know our employees, we're pretty confident those are exactly accurate. The student ones, we would say would be under-reported if anything.
Any other board members have any questions for Mr. Jeffers? Ms., Ms. Bailey?
Mr. Jeffers, do we have any demographical information on the ages of the children that, who have tested positive?
We have breakdown of every grade, for every student, yes.
Do you have that information for us this evening?
No, no, sir. We do not, we did not put that out there. If you'd like to break it down that way, we certainly can.
I think the board, yeah, I think that would be, you know, if you could send that information to the board.
Sure.
So we can see, you know, is it more, was it more elementary? Was it more secondary? What, what exactly was it? Maybe Ms. Height could shed some light on that when she speaks about the demographics of how that fell into place.
She, yeah, she wouldn't, actually wouldn't have seen. There's only a couple.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay.
There's some HIPAA regulations that make it very few, I think only three of us.
There's only three of us.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
But I, but summary of them, it'd be no revealing data. I can, I can summarize and say we've had this many elementary, middle, and high school students, yeah.
Okay.
I'll have it to you.
Yes, Ms. Bailey?
Just another, one more question. Mr. Jeffers, you mentioned that back in September, when our numbers were in the red in the county, we were confident of where those numbers were.
Yes.
And so do we know now, I mean, I read yesterday that the outbreaks that are occurring now, um, almost all of these outbreaks are in nursing homes or prison systems. Do we know now of the twenty-six cases that were last week? Is there, what, do they report that to you guys? I don't know how you know where they, where the cases are.
Ms. Nichols might be.
Much of that data comes from the director of emergency services for the county. He's informed me in the earlier cases where we said we were comfortable in sending students to school, that it was a prison or a nursing home primarily. The latest numbers that we have looked at, when I've asked the question, has just said it's widespread community, and within the community. it's widespread community, within the community.
And so the data that I look at is typically, I mean, I haven't seen, like you said, was like four, five, six, and then you mentioned the number seven.
Today, yeah, today's seven positive cases, yeah.
So I don't, does the, the general public doesn't have access to that?
Oh, no, yeah, that's, that's the VDH, Virginia Department of Health, go to the local, yep.
So the places that I've gone to, to look at daily cases, which are, I mean, they're reputable places, but my data is typically a day behind. So I was just curious if you could share with us where.
Yeah, would you tap in VDH, please, Ms. Hatcher? Sorry, I don't have a, I got it. You go to Virginia Department of Health, COVID-19, and then locality. And when you go to locality, you can see it, it's updated at 10 o'clock, by 10 o'clock. They've been running a little bit before 10 o'clock the last few days. But you go to this table and you can see statewide, you can see by county, and you see this is data for 2, 3, 2021, reported by 5:00 PM yesterday. So they always start tallying as of 5:00 PM, I guess they do all their compiling and, you know, this time they're compiling today's numbers and tomorrow morning before 10 o'clock, they'll be posted here. And you click your dropdown, you can see cases, you can see the actual counts, you can see the cases for any county, you can see deaths and hospitalizations, they all plot right there. It runs one day behind. The Harvard study, which we also, we tracked that one, which is a very nice color coded map of the country, and you can zoom into wherever you want, that one trails two days behind this data.
That, I think that's the source that I've been looking at most routinely. And it, it, it's always interesting to me that you guys have, you're a day ahead of me. I'm always a day late and a dollar short, I think.
Well, the nice thing is you can calculate, we have 30,346 people live in Mecklenburg County, and so you can, you can also take those sevens and do your quick calculation and, and get it. That's how I kind of project some of these and say, we should be in the yellow by. You just kind of plug some fake numbers in there for the next couple of days and say, what if we're 10, what if we're eight, what if we're 20? And you can just, you know, get an idea.
So I'm, I'm on that site now, and it says as of Wednesday, February 3rd, six new cases So it's, it's a day, it's a day behind. So it really wasn't yesterday, yesterday was Tuesday.
Tuesday, that's right.
That was six cases on Monday.
That's right.
Okay.
Any other board members have any questions for Mr. Jeffers? Ms. Smith?
Mr. Nichols, on Tuesday, I think there were eight new positive cases, and there are 161 active cases in the county. Are those community spread, or is there a breakdown that you could share with us with that many cases?
Ms. Smith, the best that I can tell you is when I get an opportunity to speak with our county emergency management director.
Yes.
And he's been very good about sharing data. He, he actually sends us daily numbers like you're speaking of.
Yes.
It's interesting, most of the time those numbers show up the very next day on the health department and two days later. Occasionally, we will find some discrepancies and, and we never get specific information because again, it's HIPAA regulations about names and specific situations.
Yes.
But they're, they're very close, and that's why we watch all of them as closely as we can. And as I mentioned to Ms. Bailey, through January, conversations that I had with them related to vaccines, trying to find ways of getting the vaccines, and also looking at where the spread was, and the, the data that I got, the information that I got was it's pretty, it's, it's throughout the community. There were no, there were no hotspots that, that I was made aware of as we looked at
Thank you, Mr. Jeffers.
Thank you, Ms. Schrecker.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Brian, will you cut the light back on, please? Unless, unless Ms. Height has a presentation?
No, I don't.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nichols, School Board members. I come to you tonight at the request of Mr. Nichols to explain my viewpoint as to why reopening of schools was delayed for two weeks at last week's leadership team meeting. So on January, the 27th, our leadership team met to discuss as a group the prospects of returning to school on February, the 1st. As had been projected, our start date that for elementary, middle and high school students whose parents wanted those students to return for in-person instruction. Every member of the group had an opportunity to speak in regards to their school or their department. So the leadership team is made up of school principals, central office personnel, directors and so forth. So everyone had an opportunity to speak about their department or their viewpoints. Everyone agrees that we're ready to receive our students back at school. That's not a question. We all understand the importance of in-person instruction. And we realize the impact of remote learning. We do realize that. However, we had to consider all factors when we were making our decision. And one of the things that kept coming to light was our staff. On this particular day, as Mr. Jeffers just showed you the data, we were at our highest point in COVID-19 numbers. And it was double the number that we had closed schools in December. And so that was very alarming when we started pulling that data up. And so it was our decision to postpone school again. And for safety reasons, we thought about, you know, doing it for one more week. And collectively, the group said that they were getting a lot of pushback from the parents with the week to week decisions. And so the suggestion was made to let's put it out for two weeks because at this point the number was so high and we needed time to get that number down. And so we also thought about our transition at our secondary schools because they're going to be on a rotating schedule, A week, A week, B week. And we would prefer to have our students come back on an A week. Thus, we made the decision to delay our opening to February, the 15th, which will be an A week. We did start the semester February, the 1st. Even though we're virtual, it's still an A week. Next week will be B week. The following week will be A week. And that will certainly help with our departments and so forth with transportation as well. It also helps with record keeping. Our schools and departments have gone to great lengths to prepare for the arrival for our students at all levels. Classrooms have been organized to make sure that students are at least three feet apart. Some classrooms have been completely moved to accommodate the large class sizes that they're going to encounter. Staff has been reassigned in some buildings so that we can accommodate every single student and every parent that wants to send their student back. Transportation routes have been established and each school has communicated those routes to those parents. And that was another thing that we didn't want to have to call one more time and say, oh, by the way, now we're going to change it up again. So we wanted to make sure we stuck with that plan. This is especially important for the students on the AB rotation, as I just stated. I thank you for listening and I hope that you understand that we are trying to make the best decisions that we can for all of our students, but we must consider our staff as well. Because if we don't have teachers to teach our children, then we're going to be in dire trouble. And we may agree to disagree, but our leadership team stood behind this decision and we supported Mr. Nichols in the decision. Thank you. Any questions?
Ms. Height, you said that all of the secondary schools are prepared.
Yes, sir.
Oh, and I guess it's a little conflicting because of emails that I have received from a great number of faculty from secondary. And also looking at social media, I mean, everybody, it's, it's out there. The teachers are out there, you know, we haven't prepared, we're not ready. I can't tell you from the number, so it's, it's contradicting to hear you say that all of the children, they're, all the, all the faculty are ready for their children to come back. And when I'm getting so many emails from teachers on the secondary level that say they're not ready.
Well, I can tell you that at the leadership team meeting, when we poll every single principal, they report that their school is ready to receive students.
I would simply make a guess that there have been directions that have been given to the teachers to be prepared for coming back. And that people have been working to get ready for that, but when they're using terminology and emails, they may be reflecting on the fact that I have worked to get ready, but I'm not sure personally if I feel fully ready for students to come back or am comfortable. I know I've read many of those emails as well that have come in through the week and particularly today. And, and the sense that I get is a, a general sense of many of the teachers that they would like to, for their own health purposes, to not have students return until they've all gotten vaccinations. That's one of the reasons that I've asked Ms. Mooney to speak to us on the health issues because I think what she has to say may help understand why we would say, yes, we can come back without having all the vaccines in place. But it, it, we sometimes get lost in it. But I can tell you that the, the overall expectations and directions for teachers and what to expect with the students coming back have gone out to them.
Okay, I just, I guess, and not to throw a monkey wrench in, in the plans, but I had a teacher actually stop by today and she made me think about something. You know, you know, we're trying to fix this virtual gap because we know virtual is not working at all for our students. This might be working for 10% of our students in our school division. But I'd say for the greater part of the other 90%, it is not working. She threw out an idea, you know, why don't we have the A group come Monday, Tuesday every week, and the B group come Wednesday, Thursday? So they're in the building every week, that they don't have that 10-day gap because it's, we're going to remotely go back to the same thing. We're going to have the A group come and then it's going to be another 10 days before they come back. And, you know, just for one instance, you know, I hear one school in our division, I hope it was incorrect the way it was told to me, but the very first day of second semester, they had almost 300 that didn't even log in that day, the whole day. So that tells me again, that reiterates to me that virtual is not working at all. So she got me to thinking about that thing. You know, at least his children will be in school every week, that they don't have that 10-day gap where they fall back into the virtual learning or working a job, especially our juniors and seniors. Because I, I hear that's what a lot of them are doing. So I don't know if you all had thought about that?
We did. We considered that way back in July as well. And, and the more we talked about it, the more that the decision was made to do weeks at a time. And I'll tell you, in talking with colleagues across the state, those schools who are doing the, you know, two days on and the middle of the week is their cleaning day, and then they have the Thursdays and the Fridays, teachers feel like every Thursday is another Monday. And they, they've not been real satisfied with that plan.
Well, I guess we would still give the, the faculty their Friday, I mean, I know they're doing virtual.
Right.
But, you know, it gets, it just was food for thought and, you know.
And we, we have thrown that plan around, but we thought for more consistency that, and for transportation reasons and meal deliveries and all this, it's easier to do. We felt like for our school division, with the staff that we had, it was easier to do in week increments.
And again, just as, as a concern, and you know, again, my opinion, as a concern, I feel like it's not going to help the gap where the virtual, because again, it's not working. I hear from, I just can't tell you the number of parents I've heard from that their children are failing, that they're just, they're doing horribly. And again, we're going to have that 10-day stretch gap where they're going to be out of school again.
They're going to have, they're going to be able to participate every day, you know, with the classes going on, you know, the instruction is still going to continue and the teacher is going to be teaching and the children can log in and participate right with the group that's, that's there for that week. So, you know, they'll be able to, just because I'm on the B week doesn't mean that I'm not doing anything. You're still going to be engaged in what the other, the kids in school are going to be doing as well.
Well, you know, like I know that that, that's just not happening.
Well, and I realize it may not be, but we're making every effort to put that information out there, you know.
I totally agree, no, it's up to the parent, the parents have a stake in this as well.
Right, yes. And virtual, virtual learning is difficult on everybody. And so, you know, we're, we're ready to go back to school. But again, when this decision was made, which, you know, we've talked about, we really had to consider safety. And, and I, I, I'm just hard pressed to think that, I, I don't know what we would do if we opened doors and then we had a huge outbreak and we wouldn't have people in the buildings to teach the children. And then my fear is that we'd have to, you know, put 75 desks in a gym and have somebody just sit there and they're sitting there logged on their computer anyway, you know, so, and that's not going to solve anything. So I have to have, I have to have people to be there to supervise children and to, and to, you know, provide that instruction. And so, you know, that's something that we really had to consider.
I think it's worth mentioning as you speak, that the, the Department of Ed suggests school divisions be creative in the way they work with the needs of their students. And we had a significant discussion about more students coming in second semester to elementary. But it was, it was far and away the, the choice of the principals with their teachers' input to work to get, to keep the students coming in every week.
Yes.
Every week at this elementary level, as well as the need for our special needs and our ESL students to come in every week. And they will be doing that.
That is correct.
With Fridays as virtual. That was looking for consistency's purpose to have the secondary students come in because we absolutely cannot meet the minimum three-foot distance with masks at the secondary level if we were to bring them in every week.
And, and so when I said that schools have been rearranged, we had elementary schools that have done a lot of creative things to make sure that they wouldn't have to go on an AB week. But for safety reasons, that's the safest thing to do for secondary. So, you know, that's why we're not doing the same thing at both because the elementary was adamant and they, they were, they have done lots of creative things to make sure children can be there.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, just two questions. The first one is, I'm, I mean, I'm not a fan of virtual learning, I, I don't like it, but everybody keeps talking about it's not working. My question is, is the failure rate because they're not doing the work or they're not doing the work correctly?
I think it's a combination of things. I think it's a combination of students not actively participating like they should if they would in a traditional classroom. And despite all of the efforts from the teachers and building principals calling and trying to get them engaged, they just are not engaged in it. So when you don't participate, you, you don't do well in classes, yes. And so that's the majority of the problem. I, I have someone that's going out and doing home visits, you know, to try to help us, you know, get people involved.
So, I mean, in your professional opinion, is our failure rate more of a incomplete status than a learning status?
I think it's more of an incomplete status, yes, sir. If you're asking my professional opinion, I think that students are not doing well because of the lack of effort, not on, on their behalf of trying to get their work done, yes, sir.
February, the 15th?
Yes, sir.
We're ready.
Yes, sir.
What, hang on, Ms. Bailey had asked, Mr. Edwards, I'll come to you and then I'll come to Ms. Smith. Ms. Bailey?
Yeah, Ms. Height, I was just, I was noticing earlier in the week, and I didn't know if it was going to change, so I pulled it up again when I got here. The state snapshot of Virginia school operational status shows Mecklenburg in a partial in-person status. And, and that is as of January, the 26th.
So Mr., where Mr., he might be able to, Mr. Jeffers might be able to speak to that. There's a report that has to be turned in and probably what has happened is that just, they just have not updated it because we're, am I correct? There's a report we have to submit all the time on that, I do know that much.
So we, we submitted a report in December that said that we were all virtual. And as of January 26th, the VDOE hasn't updated that map. So when the press or when parents, or when school board members go to the expert educational site to determine how our division stacks up against 123 other ones, we don't have accurate information.
Well, keep in mind, they're still working from home, too.
We have, we haven't submitted a new plan.
That is true.
We haven't gone back yet. So we've been waiting for the decision, so they, they need a two-day. So we've been waiting for the decision, so they needed two-day turnaround for the decision change. So I have not submitted a new, an updated plan because we were supposed to go back face-to-face or hybrid again, and we haven't made that decision yet. So if we decide tonight that it's going to be Monday, or we decide next week it's going to be the 15th, then two days prior to that time, I would be submitting the form to them to let them know we changed. It has, it was an update, say we went all virtual.
And why not, though?
That was an oversight.
No, 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 an oversight in Richmond?
On my part.
On your part? Okay. So when we went virtual in December?
Yes, it's still virtual.
It should have been updated on this map?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the last one I submitted was we went all virtual in December.
Okay. So the map's wrong because it got bad data?
I haven't looked at it in a while, but I'll take your word for it.
Well, I'm just trying to figure it out.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jeffers, because, I mean, I don't know what's going on in the rest of the state until I look at that. And then I look at that and I was like, well, we're not even right. So how are the other divisions right? I don't, I don't know.
It's an electronic form.
But I do know that I read newspaper articles every day and they cite these statistics.
Yep.
And so garbage in is garbage out.
It's an electronic form we submit and so that form's submitted and there's, I don't know what happens to it from there.
I have two more questions for Ms. Height.
Ms. Height?
Ms. Height, will the internet cafes still be available to students on their off weeks?
So currently, we're not offering the internet cafes, but that is something that we would be able to put back in place, but we're just not doing it this time.
So are the gymnasiums not going to be in use for classes?
When we go back to in-person, gymnasiums will be used and we'll just have to, custodians and stuff will have to help us get set up.
So where will the cafes be? Because right now they're in the gym, well, they were, I guess, in the gyms. I didn't know that the cafes had been discontinued.
We're not doing the cafes right now, correct?
That's right.
Actually, the cafes were very little used.
We have attendance for those.
Okay. And then my last question.
As well as the tutoring that we tried to offer as well.
My last question from Ms. Height.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I just keep hearing that a lot of the participation or lack of, you know, these kids' work schedules are getting in the way of their school schedules. And if we were in school, they would have to have permission to leave school to go to work, right?
Yes, ma'am.
That, that's a problem. And it's a problem, you know, it's, I don't know how we can fix it, but I just feel like if virtual school is taking the place of real school right now, then some of our old policies still need to be in place, even for virtual school. And I know that children have a lot of time on their hands now, but if, and I don't even know if they have the internet capability to join a class at a certain time every day. But there's some holes in our rollout of this thing that need to be tightened up in order for participation rates to improve. And I get it, it's the parents' responsibility to make sure their kids are in school. But by now, I mean, some of these kids, they've had 50 absences in the first semester because they didn't log into their class. That would never have been acceptable in our, in in-person school.
We're still tracking truancy. We still are doing truancy prevention plans, we're still doing truancy conferences, we're still doing home visits and we're still doing court referrals. So, you know, as soon as the information gets to us, we are following the protocols and we have somebody in place that's doing home visits and knocking on doors and we're trying to do attendance like we are supposed to. It is very difficult in the virtual world, but our school division is making every effort to tackle attendance properly every day. As a matter of fact, there was a meeting yesterday and I know that that's something that they worked with school data people and building principals to make sure that all the codes are in there correctly for second semester. And we are trying our best to make sure that we are doing that. We are also monitoring those students who are supposed to have early release and that the proper paperwork is in place for that. There was a conversation about that just today. So we are trying to monitor those types of things to make sure. Now, what children choose to do, you know, if they choose to work in the mornings and not go to their first block class, we can track attendance, but, you know, other than that, I can't, I can't do too much more of that.
So as a follow-up then, is it just kind of up to each teacher to determine how their students will engage? I mean, I think, I mean, I don't know because I know what my, my child's teachers are requiring, but I don't know what the.
Right. So we have division protocols about the expectations of what teachers should be doing as far as live times or recorded lessons and stuff like that. And we have discussed that as our leadership team. Every building principal is aware of that. It's up to the building principals to monitor that, to make sure that's happening. We also have mandatory office hours during the week and on Fridays. So we have those things in place. And then, as you know, your email gets, you know, bombarded, our phones, and we field all of those questions and get them right back out to the schools as best as we can, you know, to make sure that we are trying to stay on top of things. I know our technology department works hard troubleshooting 24 hours a day, you know, over Christmas break, hunting for a lost, you know, something that was lost out in canvas world, you know. And they work hard. So we're making every effort and our staff is working very hard to do that.
Mr. Edwards, thank you, Ms. Bailey. Mr. Edwards?
Yes, I don't really understand how our operation operates. I've been watching Chesterfield County. I have a grandson that lives in Clarksville now and he goes to school in Chesterfield County where he goes to school. And at 9:15 in the morning, he logs on and he's on there until 11:45, live streaming with a teacher. They take a break in the middle of that for like 10 minutes, but then he goes right back to live stream. And at 11:45 or something like that, they break for lunch, they take their lunch and at 1 o'clock, he has to be back in front of that computer and check in. If he does not check in, an email is sent to his father. And they know right away that he's not on there. I know this is a lot of work, but the teacher, if the teacher is in front of that, live streaming to this kid, they can tell whether they're on or not.
That is correct.
And so it's time to put discipline back into our schools. If the kid checks out, check him out. You know, something has to be done. And when you get to middle and high school, some of these kids have to take some grown-up responsibility and not, let's don't blame it on the teachers and let's don't blame it on all, on the parents. I realize we have a parent problem, but this is, this is not going to change because if the, if our government changes some of the rules and everybody's offered either-or in the coming years, you're going to have the biggest mess in the world because you're not going to know which kids are going to come to school, which ones are going to stay at home. And I think that's going to come just to satisfy the public, not to satisfy education. The worst problem we have in Mecklenburg County is trying to live stream with a teacher anywhere and you get cut off six times a day because we don't have the technology down here. If you're in Northern Virginia, you're in great shape. What we need to do is we need to, everybody wants to march on everything else in the United States. It's about time the poor people in these counties get up in arms and demand that some people do something about the technology. If that's the way we're going to educate kids, then somebody's got to put the money into it in these counties to get that done rather than wasteful money on other things. So, just a point.
I agree. And I would like, and I can just piggyback off that a minute. And I want to say, I don't think we have a technology issue in our school division because we are technology-rich. We're very fortunate. We have connectivity issues in our public, not, we have devices available, we don't have the broadband and, well, I can't speak to all that myself. But, you know, that's, but I don't, we are, we're very fortunate in our school division with technology.
Oh, I know. We've done a great job over the years. I've been there a lot of years and watched it grow from nothing, you know. So we've done a great job with that. It's just that we're treated like second-class citizens down here. And when we talk about equal education, why don't we go up, the VSBA and some of these people, why don't they go over there and say, listen, equal education means that all the citizens in this county are treated equal too. So we want the same thing that they have in Fairfax County and you guarantee it. Don't spend the money somewhere else, you spend it on a per-person basis and make sure we get what we pay for. We pay taxes just like everybody else. We wanted to come back to our children, that's where we're trying to spend it.
Well, and I think that's what's been very difficult about COVID and us having to shut down as well. It's just like with anything else, we have a lot of mandates that are given to us and they're not funded. And granted, we've had CARES money and we're grateful for that, but the philosophy is, is here's your problem, you just fix it. And without any direction a lot of times. And so that's why I think I admire our leadership team because we do sit down and we do try to talk things out and we try to make decisions that satisfies everyone and not just one. And I think that that is what's made us stronger through this whole process.
Before I get, Rob, Mr. Edwards, I cannot agree more with you. I know we've agreed to disagree, but the discipline part, and Ms. Height, I'm sorry, this is for you because Mr. Campbell's got another question as well. But I questioned this early on when we started this and I was, we were told it couldn't be done, just like Chesterfield County's doing, so many other divisions are doing in that area, synchronous learning. When a sixth grader is supposed to be there at 8:15 in the morning logged in and that teacher's teaching, they are supposed to be logged in and they, you know, they do until lunchtime, they take a lunch and then they come back. And that's how it's done. And then they've got to be in there learning. They don't have an opportunity to work a job or not be online. But again, why can't we, why can't we do that? If we're, you know, if we're offering virtual, we're going to offer you virtual and it gets back to the discipline part to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do. Do it that, do it that a way. We're offering virtual, but it's going to be synchronous, period.
And second semester, that is our plan for our learning to be synchronous. And that's one of the things we were talking about with the A week, B week, so that way it's not, everybody's on the same page with instruction. We have not mandated that you have to be in at the, like, Darren Block 1, Darren Block 2, Darren Block 3 because of the connectivity issues that we have. But our teachers do record things so that students can come back on their time and look at it. I know Mr. Nichols is going to be addressing the board at a later date about offering mandates that we can say students must do summer school or remediation and things like that because we have not had the ability to do that in the past.
Mr. Campbell?
So I agree completely with Mr. Edwards and Mr. Honeycutt. My only question is, when are the teachers going to have time to send those 20 or 30 emails that they didn't show up?
So.
Because I mean, I'm just saying, like, how old is your grandson?
16.
16. So that teacher's probably got 20, 30, 40 kids during the day?
I don't know, but after he doesn't log in one time, it pretty much was taken, if you've got a strong parent involvement, he doesn't do it.
Well, there's the key, a strong parent involvement, but, I mean, does the teacher quit teaching the ones that log in to send that email?
You know, and if you've got a, I mean, with smart technology, you can push one button and send everybody the email at one time that your child did not check in at 8 o'clock. I mean, I mean, they, everything can be programmed. I'm not a technology freak, I mean, I'm lucky to.
I don't know, I mean, that might be a question for Brooke.
Well, I do know that we do have a button on our attendance button for our high schools that they.
I know that the teachers take attendance.
Yes.
But to take the time to send that email, I don't know if, like he said, that you could push one button and send it to everybody that was absent?
Well, in our student information system, like, if I teach first grade and I take my first period attendance, my block attendance or whatever that morning, the attendance clerk in the elementary schools, they're in charge of making phone calls and taking care of that. In the secondary, there's a button, correct me if I'm wrong, Brooke, there's a button that each student has to hit to say that they are present for that day. And then that sends a message through the system and that's how they can track attendance as well.
But if they're not present, does it send the email to the parent?
It does not. We do phone calls.
Okay, so that has to be manually done by somebody?
Right.
Okay.
We still do our truancy protocols like we have in place where we still call and, or the parent calls in and says, my child's not going to, you know, participate today or whatever.
I'm just.
But we still have our attendance clerks at each building following the attendance policy.
I mean, my wife's a teacher and she's lucky, she's only got however many kids, I don't know, 20, whatever. But when you talk about Mr. Ritchie's wife, she's probably got 60 throughout the day. The teacher's not going to have time to send those emails. So we're going to have to hire somebody just to send the emails unless we can figure it out like Mr. Edwards said. And I mean, discipline needs to be part of it and I agree with him 100%. But it seems like we're doing everything, and I say it again, I don't like the virtual, we're doing everything we can to educate the children. The children are not doing it.
In some cases, that is the truth.
And again, that's real quick, and that kind of piggyback, Ms. Height, off of what I was saying about the students being in school every week. You know, that A group Monday, Tuesday, B group Wednesday, Thursday. And again, they've got that 10-day gap so they can plan their schedule, oh, look, I'm going to work all next week while I'm supposed to be doing virtual, I'm going to be working. So, I mean, it deturfs them from, you know, I just, I think the gap is still going to be huge there if they're not in the building every week. And that, again, that was just a way to put them back in. And that's just about two cents with that. Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Smith.
I just.
I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
Two things. Mr. Edwards spoke to the rural divide for our high-speed internet, but there are also urban divides as well because high-speed internet is too expensive. Even if it's running, even if the fiber's running by your door, if you can't afford to connect into it. So we, there's two underserved groups. Rural because we don't have the connectivity and urban because they can't afford it. And even if we get the connectivity here in the rural areas, I'm not sure that people are going to be able to afford it, to have it. Just having it available is not enough. You got to pipe it in. This is another question, Ms. Height, I was just made aware of this today and I don't even know if, I just want to confirm it with you to see if we have an answer. I was told that at the beginning of this school year, on the secondary level, that if a teacher was out because of illness or whatever reason, that substitutes were not going to be available at the secondary level, that those classes would be covered by whoever's left in the building. I don't know what that looks like. But have we changed that policy? If we come back every other week on a A/B week, are there going to be substitutes available to cover if any of our teachers have to go out for quarantine reasons or for illness reasons?
So we have a substitute list available for every school and we have protocols in place for how teachers call out and, you know, how then you secure a substitute. It will be, we will have substitutes if there are substitutes available.
So my initial question was, they were told in September that there would not be substitutes available on the secondary level, is that true?
Yes, they were because they were not doing in-person. They could, I mean, if a teacher was at home, they could just teach virtually. So we did not use substitutes first semester, but we will have them available for second semester if there are substitutes available. That's another issue as well.
I understand, I understand. But that was the concern. They thought that maybe that policy would carry over into the spring. So I just want to alleviate any concern that's out there.
Right. And that's been discussed, that, you know, we will have those available.
Well, it may have been discussed, but I don't think our teachers are aware of the policy. I'm just, just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that. Thank you.
Mrs. Smith and Mr. Allgood, I'll come to you after, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I have listened and I agree with most of the comments. And Mr. Edwards, maybe we as board members could also give input whenever something is mandated and not funded. I have a tendency to contact a representative or a senator whenever that happens. And they do listen to us. And if they get a lot of calls, they have to listen to their constituents. But I just wanted to speak and first of all, we appreciate everything that you all are doing. I can see the difficulty to keep everybody aware and to do the, perform the statistics and everything that you're keeping up with. And we have faith that you're doing, I have faith that you're doing the best job that you could do in these circumstances. And we have faith that you're doing, I have faith that you're doing the best job that you could do in these circumstances. But I wanted to present just another point of view. I had this concern from a concerned grandmother. There's another point of view out there that we, we are not touching on, who has chosen to allow her child to remain virtual for the remainder of the year. I see her struggles, but I'd rather see her struggles than to take a chance on her not being with me another year due to the possible exposure to COVID-19 and its variant. Thank you. That's all she said, but that was enough. Because this is out there. Then I listened to Dr. Fossey before leaving home. We are fighting a COVID war and we have to accept that fact. This is a war. Things are changing. Mutations are taking place. It's so variant that we are not going to be perfect in any decision that is made. And all that you can do sometimes is not going to be enough. Parents are struggling. Those persons I have seen doing virtual are very systematic, similar to what Mr. Edwards was talking, was speaking of. And it's possible, but every parent is not going to be doing that. Some parents don't even know how to do that. They haven't been trained to do that. We have, the majority of our parents would, would be struggling with some of those things themselves. Because virtual, we have to admit, is hard, difficult for everybody, even adults. But as I listened to Dr. Fossey, they're evaluating their guidelines. They don't have complete compliance throughout the country. They are now speaking of whether it's better to single mask or double mask. And he's, he said that they would make a general opinion and when they get all the data accumulated, then they would give a mandate to the public. But right now, President Biden is, is saying that there should be mask wearing in all federal buildings. Masking up is what all Americans should be doing. So there's a lot. This is a complicated situation. And we, we, we have to just face what we're about. It's like this grandmother. Of all we're speaking about and watching those statistics spike, our mistakes are not as, maybe as impactful as deaths. And in all our working and planning, that's what we're trying to avoid, hospitalizations and deaths. And those of us, I bet everybody in here now knows many people who are fighting COVID. And I continually ask prayer for Mrs. Talbot, Gloria Talbot, because we met at that conference last year. She's a fighter. She stayed in ICU for so long now she's out understanding, doing better. But she's been fighting for a long time. So they're now working with the symptoms after you have COVID. You might have had it and you have symptoms where this disease is affecting other parts of the body, other organs. All right, we have all this group out here that we're not discussing that's asymptomatic, who go around spreading it, but they don't know, nobody knows. So we, we have to face the fact that we are in a COVID war. And I admire and I appreciate what Mr. Nichols and your staff, all of you are doing. Because I believe you're doing your best under all these circumstances. And I know our teachers and all our school personnel, I believe they're doing all they can do to, under the circumstances that they are given and that we've been dealt with. So I think we have to stop trying to be perfectionist and get it where every child is going to learn. It's not going to happen. With virtual, it's not going to happen. We're not going to be, we would like, we have to depend on other things to come in. And the main thing is to win this war on COVID. Because once we win this war on COVID, then we won't have a need for some of the things that we're discussing now. So it's, it's important for us to try to keep everybody alive now. Students, teachers, all personnel, all school personnel, all staff members. And who knows what can happen when we all follow the rules and we all mask up and we all do what we're supposed to do and modeling our children and our teenagers start doing. We know how difficult it is to get them to do some of these things. And so it's going to be very difficult for secondary schools to succeed when all of those kids come back and I don't care what kind of plan we have, there is going to be no perfection. And we might as well face that. We are human beings. And we, we just can't, can't move on our own and expect things to happen. But I wanted to give you this other point of view.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Mr. Allgood?
Ms. Height?
Yes, sir.
Aren't there child labor laws that don't allow children to work during regular school hours or not?
I, I think that there are laws that way, but.
I mean, they used to be. So why are these employers being allowed to work these children during school hours?
I can't speak to what they're doing.
I might be able to help you with that. I don't think there's a law that allow, doesn't allow them to work during school hours because during the summer, they would still be considered school hours. So you wouldn't be able to. But some of them are not in school. Yeah, but it depends on how the labor law is, is written as to, you can't work on between eight and four. Because I mean, they would have to do it for all year. And I mean, Mr. Edwards may, he, he runs a company. He may have more insight on that.
I can't, because of OSHA laws, I can't hire anybody in high school anyway. They can't climb a ladder and they can't oversaw and they can't do anything.
The one that we're aware of and it's one that has come to light with us recently is that we think that they can't work past 10 o'clock at night.
I know they couldn't work after three hours.
Right. But that's the extent of what I know of the law. I'm sorry.
Okay. And the only other comment I had was just out there. You talk about getting substitutes, as poorly as, as we pay in every other area, are they going to take a risk to come in with their health? I don't see you getting any subs. I was subbing when my son needed me in apomatics and it was a labor of love. By the time I paid the gas, the apomatics from back, the county owed me money.
I think that the.
I wasn't breaking even.
I think that the rate for substitute pay may have increased some, but.
It needed to.
Yeah. But it's, it is. People are leery about coming in and stuff. I hosted a substitute training, not for new substitutes, but for our current people on our list. I did host that back in August and went over COVID procedures with them. So when they did get called to come in a building, they would know the procedures that we had in place for Mecklenburg County because they needed to know about using restrooms and wearing your mask and using hand sanitizer and what students could do in the classroom, what they could not do. So we, we, I did host that back in August, I think it was. It seems like forever, but.
Because most of our subs are older people.
Yes, they are. And we had, I did two sessions, a morning session and an afternoon session. It was full. But as time has gone on, there are more people who are leery about coming into the school environment.
I would think so.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Allgood. Mr. Palmer?
Yes, sir. Ms. Height, I agree with Mrs. Smith and some of the others who have spoken. I think you all are doing a wonderful job. Nothing is going to be perfect. Nothing that we have are going to be perfect. And this is not the only county. Loudoun County has plenty of money. Most of us know about Loudoun County. One of the things that was said to the teachers when they came in, the new teachers, the principal told them, you don't have to have bus duty, you don't have to have cafeteria duty, but you are going to teach our children because we have plenty of money to, for. So for that, I say you all are doing a great job as far as what I know. The other thing that I wanted to touch on as far as schools allowing students to come back to school, my philosophy on that is if every teacher, custodian, cafeteria worker, and all have been, have received their shots, let's just put it in simple terms, then I would have no problem with students coming back to school. And I have no problem with them coming to school regardless. But I think we all need to put our foot down, as the old expression is, to make sure that all of our people that are here are not going to, as Ms. Smith said, have children coming home sick or pass away. It's too late to think about what we should have done. At that point, we should think about that now. So that's my thing. I don't mind. I, I emphasize, I want students to come back to school because that's where they're supposed to be. But we also have to have it so that they are safe in their environment. That's something I agree with you all, Ms. Smith. They need to, they need to be in school, but they also need to be safe here in school.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Ms. Connor?
I hate to ask because I know y'all have been so busy, but have you thought about advertising another substitute school and see if you could get new people to sign up to be?
A substitute school or a substitute training?
Yeah, training.
So as a matter of fact, Ms. Shepherd and I did speak about that today and I think she's working with Ms. Brown. That's her department. So I think that they are trying to get something organized for that.
And one last question, Ms. Height. Do you, can you tell me what percentage of secondary, six through twelve, have registered to come back in person?
I don't, Mr. Jeffers, do you have that number? I don't have the exact number, but.
Have you got, just have you got a guesstimate percentage?
I want to say at Parkview High School, it's like 400 children, 200 A week, 200 B week. Parkview Middle is about the same. And the Blue Stone End is.
Thirty-nine percent of the students at Blue Stone High School indicate they were going to come back face to face and it was a little higher than that for Blue Stone Middle School.
Okay. All right, Mr. Campbell?
I can, I can, real quick, elementary schools, South Hill's adding about 200 students, most, and our other three are adding near 100 students.
Okay. Mr. Campbell?
I mean, I appreciate everything's been said, but I mean, this is a special call meeting. I think we need to move on to the next person.
Correct.
Because, I mean.
But again, I wanted to give everybody an opportunity to be able to ask questions about what's going on because all of us have been bombarded, I believe, with emails and phone calls and so.
Well, I mean, we signed up for that.
Right.
Brooke, Mr. Dalton, Mr. Jeffers, Ms. Height didn't sign up to be here till nine o'clock tonight.
I'm hoping that's not going to be the case.
Well, it's already seven thirty.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Height. And Ms. Mooney, I believe you're next up.
Mr. Dalton.
Mr. Dalton, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, school board members. I've been asked to come tonight and just basically speak to y'all about the operational issues that we look at when we make the decisions whether or not to go back to school. So different operational departments fall under me, mainly transportation, custodial and food service doesn't, but Ms. Moore asked me to, if I would highlight, highlight her situation also. So basically, as far as transportation goes, it has been the roughest year we've ever had because normally Ms. Connor or our routing specialist will make the routes during the summertime and those routes tend to be changed as children move and so forth over the year. But predominantly, those routes stay true throughout the school year. And we usually have an abundance of bus drivers. This year, the routes have changed multiple times. We've had to create two sets of bus routes for the secondary schools as we go back. And we've had to try to incorporate the students that want to come back face to face on an elementary level into our bus routes also. We're down into the eighties on bus drivers. We used to be well over 100. That does pose some problems that we've worked through, but it's not just a switch we can turn on and off and decide, well, we're going to go back elementary this, this week and then maybe we'll work the secondaries in. And what about sped? You know, they're all move, a lot of moving parts to trying to create the routes. And then you have to get that information out to parents so you don't get bombarded with calls that my bus didn't show up or my child stayed out in the freezing cold when, for an hour. You know, we're trying to get those bus routes out to them as accurately as possible. You know about the issues we've had with bus drivers, we're working on that. And we, we've had to become creative, but I think we've, we've come up with ways to cover all routes. I'm not going to say some, some of the elementary school kids won't get to school a few minutes later at La Crosse because we're having to use our secondary bus drivers to run double routes in some cases. Custodians, when we were going back in the first semester and our numbers were kind of down, most of our custodial staff, in which all our positions are filled, and we've actually used CARES money to move forward and grab a few more, but they're just not out there. I don't even have any applicants right now to try to grab anymore. So we focused most of our custodial manpower on the elementary schools where we did have kids coming face to face at the time. One of my worries has always been when I have to spread that custodial staff out now to cover eight locations again with children coming on a, on a daily basis, Monday through Thursday. With the numbers high, we talk about what happens if we get a teacher or two teachers or three teachers at a facility that, that has to be quarantined either due because they have COVID or where they've become in contact with someone. But at a lot of these places, we only have a staff of four to six custodians. What happens to that whole facility if two, three of my custodial staff, if my custodial staff at that facility is depleted because the percentile is much greater there as it is teachers? What happens if my custodial staff gets depleted enough to where we can't operate that school? Because people, we don't give them enough credit. I mean, they're our first line of defense against this because they're the ones that's actually initiating the procedures and the protocols we put forth as far as the disinfecting and the sanitizing and making sure we've got what we need where we need it. And if that crumbles, then the whole school kind of falls because we can no longer keep that building open if we don't have the people in place to make sure that our, our protocols are being followed as far as disinfecting and sanitizing. That, that's something that has worried me because the numbers were so high, because our community spread was so high. And, and lastly, I know Ms. Moore, my hat's off to her. That woman has struggled and she has worked a six day week, it seems, since this thing started in March, trying to order food, trying to, to get her staff to do two or three different things, you know, whether or not we're going to call off the food routes because we're trying to get, a lot of these children need this nutrition. They depend on it. And we're trying to, we're trying to get those out to them with a joint effort between our transportation staff and Ms. Moore's staff. She's got cafeteria workers riding buses, making sure that we get the food out to those that sign up. She, she puts her orders in regarding when we say when we're going back. I'm, I'm for the February 15th restart because I feel like that's what we planned for. And operationally, all of our plans are going toward that. Could we start? Yeah. Would it be as clean? I don't think so. So, so basically, those are the three categories I was going to speak with you about and I'll be glad to take any kind of questions. I did want to touch on one thing. We, it's been going back and forth between why, why the Monday through Thursday, take off Friday, then bring B week in Monday through Thursday and that rotation. Well, a lot of that decision was made operationally because of how we get them to school on our buses. If we're transporting, especially on a secondary level, that group of A students, on Friday, that bus driver brings that bus to a certain location. Now, the bus driver does disinfect their area and any contaminants on a daily basis. All of them are equipped with a spray bottle of the hospital grade disinfectant that we use here. But on Friday, in between that A group and B group, that bus driver comes to their school and the custodial staff actually goes in with a electrostatic sprayer and sprays every inch of that bus and no one sits foot on it again till Monday. So you've got two things going for you. You've disinfected the bus and Ms. Mooney would probably speak to it. You've now had well over 72 hours where anything that you disinfected missed for time to kill. So that, that was a big part in trying, because we don't, we don't have extra buses and don't have extra bus drivers. And on that Friday, our custodial staff goes through and in between A week and B week, we've had the opportunity to disinfect doorknobs, anything we may have missed, try our best to, we're not going to capture. to, we're not going to capture it all, you know that. But try to do our best to get everything that we can possibly get done between that different group of kids coming in. And lastly, it does give that child, I know you look at it as 10 days without instruction, but it's also 10 days not being in contact with the staff. If they were asymptomatic and may have contracted, it does value a little bit more time. So I've talked to other larger school divisions, some do the A/B days, the majority of them are doing the A/B weeks. Those that are doing the A/B days wish they were doing A/B weeks from an operational standpoint. So I'll be glad to take any questions.
I do have one quick question. You made a comment a few minutes ago. You said if we started early, we wouldn't be clean. What did you mean by that?
It wouldn't be as clean of a start as it is, because everything we focused on from the decision we made last week, I didn't mean clean in a...
Right. So would you say the buildings are ready? I mean, if the children were to come back tomorrow, are the buildings ready?
We're ready as we can be.
Okay.
We don't know what to expect.
Cleanliness-wise?
Cleanliness, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Bailey had a question first.
No, that was my question, because that's what I heard, too.
Okay, I just wanted to verify. Okay, Mr. Campbell?
I just want to clarify. When we say we're coming back to school, everything you talked about is good?
On my end, yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I got one comment. I just, you know, we sat around and micromanaged as a nine-member board, and nobody even asked that question. I mean, we had, I just, I think we're blessed, and we should pat ourselves on the back for being smart enough to hire people that take care of things that we don't know about. And, I mean, transportation is one of them. That's one of the biggest items in our school system, and we don't even know anything about how that would affect just jumping into opening a week early or something. I mean, it's going to put that in a turmoil between now and Monday to make these people like have to work overtime to try to make us happy as nine people. You know, we got a plan. I hope we're going to stick to it. But I just thank transportation and everybody else for what they're doing, because, I mean, some of these things I didn't even think of myself, and I think they're well pointed.
Yeah, it takes, we've got a lot of good people in the right spots to make this happen. And we work with them every day.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Thank you. All right, Ms., I'm sorry, Mrs. Smith.
I just wanted to know, do you have things in place that you, that maybe would help the situation? Sneeze guards, for instance, for the, on the secondary level?
Not in classrooms.
Not in classrooms?
We chose to use masks and social distancing, because at the time when we were looking at it, the way our classrooms are set up, you would have to be almost encapsulated in plastic glass for them to do what they were there for. Now, in circumstances where we've got teachers doing maybe some student interviews, we do have sneeze guards that we use to be in front of the interviewer and the student. At all of our reception desks, we've got sneeze guards in place. But as far as the classroom setting, no man.
I asked that question, because I know in places like Korea and other places, they make sure that even on the elementary level, the kids have these little carols, like sneeze guards that protect them. Do you have all the PPE equipment that you would need to open safely?
As far as...
Personal protective equipment for those who are working in like the custodial positions?
Oh, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. We make sure we have all the PPE in place as far as our custodial staff. And to go a step further, we've now, all the teachers have a spray bottle of disinfectant that they can use whenever they feel that an area may be contaminated. And we've also ordered them their own set of thick rubber gloves for them to use, not disposable gloves, the thick rubber gloves for them to all add for their personal use.
So we've received enough funding from the state or the federal?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. We have an abundance of hand sanitizer soap. We've got all of that stocked. And we've installed hand sanitizer stations in about everywhere you could think of in a high-traffic area.
Thank you.
Ms. Garner?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Allgood?
Real quick, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Are there going to be masks available to kids to show up without them?
We do have, we do have some masks available at the schools. We don't have masks for everyone, but we've got masks for those that show up, I forgot my mask today, we're not going to turn you away. You know, so we do have masks available at the schools.
Because I know we do masks like they did pencils in my class, they're not going to show up.
But now, our policy is still, you should provide your own personal mask.
And if it's an issue, they have to resort to personal masks, because it's not going to turn into a discipline issue.
Okay, so there will be an alternative. Thank you, Ms. Height.
Mr. Dalton, thank you very much. Ms. Mooney, it's your turn. Come on down.
Mr. Chairman, School Board members, I thank you for allowing me to be here tonight, speak to you. I want to tell you that our first semester has proven that we are able to safely have our children in the school system as long as we are following the guidelines and the protocols that we set forth. I think all of these people have addressed the issues of how we are able to do that through containment in the classroom. You've been told about us having to close four classrooms through the whole semester, and that's exceptionally good. On the secondary level, we, our statistics are, and things that we have seen at the elementary level, and what we've looked at in the leadership meetings, have posed some concerns, because we are not able to contain these students as we have the elementary students. However, they will still have to follow, no matter what we do, how we bring them in, they will still have to follow those protocols that we have set in place. And my concern is that the older groups of children do not generally like to follow the rules. You were there, I was there, I'm a 60s child, I know how to rebel, and they do, too. They learn from us. They learned it well. My concern is that we're going to see more children not adhering to the mask-wearing, number one, and the social distancing, number two. The CDC is still highly recommending six-foot distancing when at all possible. Now, we know that's not possible in the secondary classrooms. They're not large enough to accommodate that. And we want our kids back, so we have the ability to bring them in at three-foot distancing. But they must wear their mask at all times when they are in a three-foot environment. So in the classroom, that teacher, in addition to teaching, has got to be vigilant about who has their mask on and who has it off. The other problem I see is when they change their classes, we cannot keep them separated at all times six-foot apart. And they are going to cluster, and that's going to be a problem. So we need masked police, and we need clustering police, someone who's going to stay on these children and make them follow the protocols. You still need to wash your hands, you need to watch how far apart you are, and you need to wear a mask. That's not going to go away. That's going to continue. I want to address the vaccine situation. We are doing all we can, working with the Health Department, to get those vaccines out to the staff. We've had our first successful clinic this past Saturday. We didn't get nearly all of them, but we got a lot of people that day. I want to make you aware of something with the vaccine. I heard if we get them all vaccinated, that we can bring them back and they'll feel better. Well, I don't want to disappoint you, but when you get your vaccine, there's no guarantee that you won't get COVID. You can still get COVID. And the purpose of the vaccine is if you get the COVID, then your symptoms will be lessened and not as severe, which is very important, especially with people who are 65 and older or have comorbid other issues, health issues going on. In addition to that knowledge, you need to also know that after you have your vaccine, even both of them, if you're getting the two-dose vaccine, you still will have to wear your mask, wash your hands, and socially distance. So that doesn't go away. So these people who want to say, let's put it off till we all get vaccinated, they're not accomplishing anything. They're just delaying the process, because we have already proven that with the wash-your-hands, wear-your-mask, socially distance, we can make it work. And these people, the whole first semester, no one said anything about, I want to be vaccinated first. Now that the vaccine is out there, that has become their go-to, but it's not their safety net. The COVID is out there, as Ms. Smith has already said, and this is a war we're fighting. So those are the things I wanted to let you know about tonight.
Ms. Mooney?
Yes.
I want to hug you first, because again, that was my whole thing, that irregardless if I had one vaccine or I had two vaccine, of all, and I believe me, I read data every day about this. I look at the reports from Mecklenburg every day. I look at the national averages every single day, and they all tell me what you just reiterated, that if you have the vaccine, it's still a good chance that you might contract the vaccine. But again, it does lower the, some of the effects of COVID. Thank you for pointing that out. And my second question to you would be, of our entire faculty, and I believe, how many faculty do we have? 700?
Eight hundred and seven.
I'm sorry?
Eight hundred and seven.
Eight hundred and seven. Out of that eight hundred and seven, can you please tell the public in this board what percentage signed up to take the vaccine?
I can't tell you how many actually signed up, because it's an ongoing process. We had the first run in a very short amount of time to gather a clinic together for people who wanted it, and we had like three and a half days to put it together.
But was the invitation sent out to the whole division?
It was.
So we don't have that data of the percentage?
The initial number from that was 385 out of 807.
So what percent?
Well, that's less than 50%.
Less than 50%.
About 40%. 45%.
A little over 40, I think, but less than 50.
Okay.
But we have had more that have, since then, and since we've had the first clinic, we've had more that have come back in and said, no, I do want it, or I missed it the first time, and I want to try to come in the second. So it's a growing percent.
Mr. Allgood?
Ms. Mooney, of the custodians and the bus drivers and the cafeteria workers, are they going to be included in the future? I understand it was only the teachers.
We started out, Saturday, we were under the governor's mandate to address teachers first, and we started with face-to-face in-the-classroom teachers. During the accumulation of the names and fixing up the appointment schedule, we had openings available, and I ran it by Mr. Nichols and Mr. Jeffers, and we opened it up to other people. So we did get, during that vaccination clinic, we got teachers, we got some cafeteria workers, we got some custodians. We did not get bus drivers, because I had no way to get them there in a very short amount of time. I will tell you that in setting up, I set up 200 appointments, 15 minutes apart, and I had 25 people on a standby list that were asked to come to the site. And if an appointment spot became available, those standby people were worked into those empty spots. We made a vow to the Health Department that we would not waste one drop of vaccine, and we did not. Every drop was given.
Are you willing to go to Washington and take care of this? The state national ain't got it right. Thank you for what you did.
One other question, Ms. Mooney. Do we, do you know when the next set of vaccines are going to be available?
No, sir, I do not.
Have you been giving a timeline of when they would be available? So could it be a month? Could it be two months? Could it be three months?
I don't want to project on that. It's totally up to the Health Department. They order, they are aware that we need another clinic, and she is working to get vaccines. As soon as she gets a sufficient amount, she will call me, and we will set that clinic up.
I would add to that, that on Saturday at our clinic, I'm very thankful that Sheriff Hawkins was very supportive. He was there, along with two deputies. Our Director of Emergency Services was there, having had conversations at the state level. I was there, and among the three of us, we had conversations that it was very well-run, and they want to continue to work with us, and they are in touch to say that, to get them as soon as we can, and we will work together to take care of our needs in Mecklenburg County.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes, Ms. Mooney, thank you for coming to make your report. And I just want to say that this generation of high school students that were born 2003 and later, it's a very compassionate generation. I've got a couple in my household, and I see a difference. They're very concerned about the planet, they're very concerned about social issues. And this group of children have been very compliant with mask-wearing in their workplaces, when they come to church. I think the only time that mine doesn't wear a mask now is at home, when she's with us. I think our children are going to be very compliant, because they do care. This, as I said, our high school seniors were born in 2003, 2000, some in 2002. It's a different time for them. And I want to give them some credit ahead of time, that they are going to be compliant. Many of these children have had COVID, and I know that you've been keeping those records, or what records you can keep. Of the percentage of students that are six through 12 grade, do you have any idea how many have tested positive for COVID since March?
I don't have it with me, but we can gather that data.
Because I think that's important, and not that their immunity will last for indefinite period of time, but it is immunity. And I think that's important. And those that are not, don't feel safe coming to school, of course, they have the ability to stay at home. And so I just wanted to say that. And the second thing was that vaccination is not mandatory, and we may very well have employees who don't feel that vaccination is the best thing for them, for whatever reason, whatever health condition they may have, mRNA vaccines may not be a great fit for them. There may be some employees who are considering getting pregnant, or who are pregnant, where mRNA vaccines, I know that the data says that they can get them, but the fact is that it just really hasn't been tested sufficiently in that population. So there are employees that we are going to be working with who say, I'm not getting the vaccine. And we have to stand back and say, that's okay, because masking and social distancing and washing your hands is more important. One other question. I know that you get this data about who's positive, who's quarantining, and you guard it, and you should. So in the future, if we, when the students come back to the buildings, will you be making these determinations about each building, if there's an outbreak there? Of course, that has to be reported to the Virginia Department of Health if there is an outbreak in the school. It has to be reported to the dashboard if any schools, if there's transmission within that school. But will you be making the decisions about whether we close La Crosse Elementary, because too many people there have it? And if we have to make that decision to close one school, will we close them all, or will we be looking at this a building-by-building basis?
Let me explain. All of our nurses are certified COVID trackers, tracers. We work, I work daily with the Health Department. All of the information we gather is reported to the Health Department every day or every other day, depending on how much information we get. When a decision needs to be made about, shall we close a classroom versus a school versus the whole county? I discuss it with the epidemiologist, I discuss it with Mr. Nichols and Mr. Jeffers, and we make a decision based on the information that we have available and the recommendations of the CDC and the Virginia Health Department through the epidemiologist. of the CDC and the Virginia Health Department through the epidemiologist. So if, when we close a classroom, it is not my sole decision to close a classroom. We do have the option to close just one classroom. We could close one grade level. The idea is to try not to close the whole school if it's at all possible, but we certainly can close a school to close the whole division. That would be a decision that, it's going to take a lot of exposure for us to do that, but certainly with Mr. Nichols and the epidemiologist, we would be able to do that if we need to. I will tell you that the statistics that I looked up today, there's only been one outbreak in schools in the South Side District, and it was not in Mecklenburg County. We have not had an outbreak in Mecklenburg County in the school division. We've not had school transfer, as Mr. Nichols spoke to earlier this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Mooney, I do, for one, thank you all for what you're doing as far as the, having the people come in for the shots and all. It is getting to be more open now than in the past. I know at one point, to get a vaccination was almost like you had to pull eye teeth of everyone, but now, from what I found today, is that it's going to be quite a few places around that are giving it. And I commend you all for what you're doing. My part about having people have the shot before coming back to school is that it makes parents feel better to know that, at least, it's just like when you have the pneumonia shot. We know that it's not a cure-all, but it makes people feel better, and that's why I made the comment that I did.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Ms. Garner?
I think my question would be to Mr. Nichols.
Does anybody, before we do that, does anybody else have any questions for Mrs. Mooney? Thank you, Ms. Mooney.
I have a statement before she leaves.
Okay.
I too want to commend Ms. Mooney and her staff. They did an outstanding job in helping, working with us and putting it together. We have asked extra effort all along of our school nurses, both in being prepared to do the social tracing, the contact tracing, because we knew that was going to be imperative for our schools, and they got certified for that. They've also gotten certified to do, to be able to give the shots. We did that before we had the option to be able to do it, and they conducted an outstanding program. And my main point here is, to school board members and others, there is a bill going through the General Assembly that says if you're going to be identified as a school nurse, you have to be a registered nurse. Most of our nurses are LPNs. It will be devastating to rural schools if that bill goes through. So please contact your person and tell them that's an unfunded mandate, number one, and it's not fair, because these persons have done an outstanding job.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mooney.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Smith?
I have a statement, too. I appreciate what you've done, and I noticed that our Virginia started off last, and they moved up to the top 10. I saw that before I left home, so you're all a great part of that. And Pats is going to, Pats is going to be vaccinating, I think, about 223 patients. And I heard, and Dr. Fossey and the local, from the local community, I've heard that CVS is also going to be vaccinated. So they are stepping up these programs everywhere.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mooney. Ms. Garner has a question for Mr. Nichols.
Mr. Nichols, do you meet daily, or get information daily from the ones that have spoken here?
Yes, ma'am.
Before the decision is made?
The decisions that have been made have come from conversations with all of staff about what needs to be best for the schools, yes.
Is this daily or every other day?
Well, we don't get to meet every day with principals. We have typically, but each day, we have multiple conversations. I meet, hear from Mr. Jeffers daily on the numbers. We talk about instructional issues very frequently, sometimes multiple times during the day with Ms. Height, or we're in communication. I mean, we're all over the place, but we use every technology available to stay in touch with what's going on. I do not make these decisions alone.
Well, I know at one time I asked the question about shutting down, and you told me then that you don't meet and shut down. You at least give them at least two or three days before you decide to shut down.
Well, that's, that was primarily a comment that said, you can't very well plan for the teachers to have time to shut down without giving them a couple of days. And that was, but that is always in significant conversation amongst staff.
Excuse me. Mr. Nichols, and again, I know we have an action item here. Is it any way possible, since they've already been in school, our elementary students who are creating a foundation or establishing a foundation moving forward, is any way possible that we could open at least our elementary schools back up Monday and follow through with secondary the following Monday?
Mr. Honeycutt, it's possible, it's possible that we could say that the secondary need to come back, but it's going to be, all of the issues that were mentioned here tonight are as real for elementary as they are for secondary. And so my recommendation to the board is that we bring all the students in together at the same time on Monday, December the fifteenth, excuse me, February 15th.
Second. In no way, in calling this meeting this evening, was it to undermine the superintendent. I think we, as a board, needed to get together and understand what is going on, because we haven't been given a lot of this information. A lot of this is the first time I've seen it this evening. You know, and what really hit home for me, and, you know, again, I know we have an excellent group of faculty admins, but again, you know, I'm also here representing the children. And when I have a fourth-grade parent tell me that their child, instead of looking on the internet to do their schoolwork, but looking up how to commit suicide, is troubling to me. And it goes back to that virtual is not working. I pray that you all are working on a plan to have a virtual academy set up for next year, where our teachers don't have to do both, that that actually will come to fruition. In no ways am I an educator, and I do not know how to do your job, but in the emails and, you know, in listening to parents and faculty and who want, and I can only speak a lot of what, who I represent in the 5th District, and I would say 98% of those faculty and students want to be back in school. And, you know, they want to have that opportunity, the parents want to have that opportunity. And like Ms. Mooney just said, COVID's not going anywhere. And just because we have, I had COVID, and just because we have a vaccine doesn't mean it's going to keep you from getting COVID. And, you know, I just pray that, you know, all of our faculty, and I know they're doing a great job, but, you know, I just hope, I just pray that, you know, for the best outcome, and again, I was just hoping that we could start sooner than later. I know Danville City Schools pretty much haven't missed a beat. They have some of the highest infectious rate in the state of Virginia and have had for the last six months. And, you know, they've been going to school. And I just, you know, I just think this data needed to be put out there tonight, we all needed to hear it, and, you know, where the vote goes from there is up to the board. So anybody else have any other comments they'd like to make before we move on? All right, moving on to our action items. Can I get a motion that?
Just can I hear him?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, there was some discussion at the beginning of our meeting about this template motion that we have on our agenda. I just feel like we just need to open it up to the board, make a motion. Whatever you feel is on your heart, that you want to make a motion on, that's what the motion should be, and let the vote fall where it falls.
Good.
I'd like to make a motion that we take the superintendent's recommendation and start school on the 15th of February.
Okay, so I have a motion from Mr. Ritchie that we open up on the 15th, and a second from Mr. Allgood. Any other motions on the floor? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
No. At this time, we're going to move on to board member remarks. We have, what do we have? We don't have anything.
Board member remarks.
Yes, we do have board member remarks, I'm sorry. Yes, we do have that, I'm sorry. And I'm going to start, I started with Ms. Smith this time, I'm going to start with Mr. Edwards.
I think we all remarked enough.
Okay, thank you.
My second.
Thank you. Mr. Allgood?
I agree with him.
All right, Mr. Ritchie?
I'll pass.
Mr. Palmer?
I agree.
Okay. Mrs. Smith?
I agree.
Ms. Bailey?
I don't. I feel like this board has a responsibility to the people that we represent to weigh in on the decisions and the recommendations of our superintendent. And I thank everyone who came tonight and made this explanation. You all make great sense. I'm so glad that you work for us. And we, last month, we voted on a textbook surplus, we voted to approve the calendar, we voted on a secondary handbook. Why would we not vote on the superintendent's return-to-school plan? And that's why I called this meeting tonight, because I was getting credit for it, but yet I hadn't made a stand on it. And tonight, I had an opportunity to do that. And I would just, I think that's the way we are supposed to operate. While it may not be necessary to have a vote, people are asking me why, and I want the information. It's, information empowers. I thank you all for it, and now my comments are done.
Mr. Campbell?
I'm good.
Ms. Garner?
I'd just like to thank everybody here that has done such a wonderful job.
Right. And I want to reiterate, I'm sorry, I want to reiterate that as well, when Mrs. Bailey called and asked for the meeting, I seconded that. I was one that also wanted to be able to discuss this. I don't want to be thrown under the bus, and I hope and I pray that doesn't happen. But I have an obligation to the people who elected me and put me in this seat that I represent, not only to the parents, but to the faculty and also the children. And I appreciate everyone who is in the central office. You all have had to make hard decisions. You know, I'm having to explain hard decisions being made, you know, but at the end of the day, I have to represent the people who put me here, and I hope that everybody understands that, not only faculty, but admin, all of us who are put here. So in no way, you know, one of the emails that I got was I was trying to undermine, or we were trying to undermine the superintendent. That is not my intention at all, so let me go ahead and put that to rest. I want what's best for this division. I want our children back in school, period, because that's where they need to be. They need to learn, they're not learning it virtually, period. And that's just, thank you. Thank you.
I do have one announcement.
Yes, sir.
I'm very pleased to let the board know that a grant proposal, a huge grant proposal for rural school professional development activities for our math, science, and computer science teachers was put in place. We were somewhat at the forefront of that grant application with the U.S. Department of Education. It will not flow through us, but we will benefit. And it's an $11 million grant for the state from the U.S. Department of Ed, and the governor is planning to come to our school system to announce it next Wednesday morning. And we're very thankful for that. So I want to let the board know.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. Good night.